We are in session for the Board of Review and Equalization to start today and probably listen to some budget presentations. And with that, I will ask the Honorable Assessor Larry Hess to come up and give us a brief rundown of what he expects.
Yes, thank you.
No, I just forgot the Honorable Assessor part.
You can link your honorable...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I probably should have...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to do items from the public first.
Do you want?
Items from the public.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Do we have any items from the public? I don't believe so? Okay. Okay, we ready? You were good, Larry.
No.
No? Oh, approval. Did you? I don't have one. What was it there? Oh, that's scanned lightly. Sorry about that.
You got an agenda?
No. Well, it's...
It should be on your iPad.
It's in the app.
I'm looking. February... January, right there. There we go. I'm sorry. Here we are. Item approval, the agenda.
Thank you.
But I got a chance to see it.
Mr. President, I'm ready to approve the agenda of January 31st, 2023.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second motion.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And that was the approval. And Mr. Hess?
Yes.
We'll start with you now.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. What's that time of year again? Here for the hearings, Board of Equalization. And I guess we can start by, we need to turn our books over to the county council. We do that every year. So our records are in here on his hands, but learning this board of equalization. You have a right to override our appraisals if you so choose. So we're going to do that. I do have some applications I want to put up here. We probably have applications. If somebody wants to make an application for a appeal, I'm going to lay some over here just occasionally if they need one. And same way with the dates that we have the hearings, I'll put them over here just down there.
Thank you.
Larry, just a question. Is that an appeal form available online?
Yes.
Okay.
If you go onto our website, dsassessment.org, and it's online.
Thank you.
Right on the front page. Also, the dates that you have here is online. So what this is, is accumulation of all of our work from July 1 of '21 to June 30 of '22. That's all the new construction, all the work during that, as of July '22, '23 tax year. That 12-month period is what's in there for the new assessments.
Very good.
And assessments are up again this year. Which is a good thing.
How much?
Well, here's... If you look at... I could run some numbers. In about five years ago, new construction, I'm talking about new construction, we had probably about $60 million worth of new construction. Wasn't that much?
Residential or combined?
With that.
Was that residential or combined?
No, that was everything.
Okay.
Yeah. And in 2019, it jumped over $100 million. We had $104 million in new construction in 2019. 2020, it went to $117. 21, it went to $141. 22, it went to $163. This year, we had $183,161,100 worth of new construction.
And that's important to remember because that's not subject to roll back. The new construction is... The increases in assessment will be, but that, as we start looking at, until we get the certified values from the assessor's office, new construction, the first year that it's on the books, is not subject to roll back.
Right.
So that will actually benefit you. It's only, you remember that next year, that $100 million, that $180 million will be subject to roll back.
Yeah. I'm going to clarify again because...
That's residential and commercial, both combined?
Okay.
Total, well, total real assessments, which include commercials and real estate. But doesn't include personal property. And that's a, doesn't include homestead exemption if it's backed out here, plus back taxes are back there. But that's great for our county. I mean, there's a lot of counties that they don't have that.
No. I'd be curious as to what Mon County would be, as well as Canola and a couple of those counties. But no.
But any rate, as far as, you know, the way we've always done it with, you know, we have somebody that comes in, wants to make an appeal. You know, we'll contact Penny or Tracy and let you all know. What we'd like for you to do is if you get somebody that wants, you know, wants to appeal, to send them over to our office so we can get them over all the records, make sure everything's correct, make sure the square foot's right, and number of bedrooms and that, all that stuff is correct. Then if they want to make an appeal, then they can fill out an application and come through you guys.
And all the data's current?
Yeah. Right now, we have nobody at all. We've had tremendous amount of calls, especially on residential. We had a lot of calls on residential. They've satisfied the people. They say, okay, there's still, you know, property values are going up, so... So we have nobody that wants to make an application right now. So that's great.
We didn't have anybody.
It was, we sent out, the same way this year, we sent out over 9,000 10% increase levels. We did the same thing this year. But last year, we had hardly any appeals from here, a couple of commercials, but I don't know. But I think people understand that property values are going up. And we're fair with our appraisals. We don't overappraise property. I mean, we're in line with market values. We study the market every year. We have to do that. And we get monitored by the state tax department.
That was my next statement. What happens? What happens if you don't do your job in the state?
I think we're the only department that really gets monitored. I mean, they come in there, they look at all of our records. We have to justify that our appraised values that's on camera is in line with the actual valid sales. We have to be within 10%. And they look at our mapping, they look at how we key transfers. I mean, they look at everything. We have to do that. And we passed, we passed our monitor every year since I've been assessing.
And that's the state tax office that does it?
State tax department. We're monitored by the state tax department, property evaluation commission they establish down there that kind of sets up the guidelines that we have to follow. And so it's pretty much based out of West Virginia code, the statute. We pretty much followed that. Which they made some changes this year. You're aware, you're probably aware of the changes that they, I'll let the attorneys explain all it, but you know, I'm not a lawyer. You know, we have no October hearings anymore. '23, they're gone. No hearings in October. We got rid of that. So also, if you, if you decide that you make a decision on an appeal, they would have had the right to go to circuit court. They changed that this year. Now they have a board of appraisal board in Charleston at the state tax department. So if you decide on an appeal and they don't like it, they have to go to Charleston to make an appeal to this appraisal board there. So they kind of set that up in between. They eliminated the circuit court thing. Now you got to go down there. They kind of took away a little bit from this board and give a little bit more legitimacy to the taxpayer. Because it used to be, you know, it used to be a clear and convincing evidence of proof on the taxpayer when they come in, to prove that we've, you know, screwed up their appraisal. Now it's a preponderance of the evidence. Just any evidence pretty much will, you know, sway the taxpayers' way. So we may have some problems with that because if they don't go to circuit court and you have to go down there, first of all, we're going to have to run to Charleston. Somebody is more likely. And they're going to have the hearings down there. And with making it a preponderance of the evidence, they could override you guys, you know, very easily. So, but any rate...
Larry, so same, you proposing the same process that we've used in the past, that beginning of the session, you presented any corrections to the books for the council's consideration?
As of now, you know, if we get any changes, we'll present them at the next meeting. And we'll put them in the book, write them in the books, and which you all approve. But same way we've always done, I think we...
It's worked out?
Worked out fine before. And so, but like I say, we have nobody right now. And you guys don't have anybody. So we'll be hanging around till four if you need somebody.
And I know, just to, when you guys present your changes, if you could make sure that Eric Tracy or Penny gets a copy, that way we know exactly what your, what the changes are. And it makes it easier for the attorneys to... we know exactly what your, what the changes are and it makes it easier for the attorneys to do the orders.
Okay. Anything else?
We get somebody, we'll give you a holler.
Okay.
And we'll get started with that.
That'll work then.
All right.
Very much. Next item is Clint Hogman with Solid Waste Authority for fiscal year 23, 24 budget presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Clint.
Mr. Barnhart pointed out earlier that you all were here at the four o'clock and he gave me permission to keep talking until then. Everybody who's done my budget presentation knows I can do that.
What Mr. Barnhart didn't realize, who has the gavel?
Right. So I'm here today with John Christensen, our longtime secretary, and Ms. Lashley, folks maybe know her. She's our only employee in the office. She's part-time now. She was full-time, but it's been cutbacks, but she's three days a week now. She's our program administrator. I'm hoping this made its way to your.
It did. It should be in your, it's in your packet. You also should have a first possibility that you can call us.
So my budget presentation is a little bit different in that council and the followaways authority have an inter-agency agreement where we will do a once a year sort of report on the status of our programs and we sort of combine the budget presentation with that annual report. So if you go to the annual report, I'm just gonna try to quickly move through it. You can see that our, we provide two basic types of services to the public. One is the county's recycling program and the second is the county's litter control programs. Starting with recycling first, you can see that it started in 1995 and it has grown to become the largest recycling program in the state of West Virginia. It's predominantly a drop-off program. We have three drop-off sites. Small one in Hedgesville, two large ones, one in Inwood and one in Martinsburg. And it's, there's also, the program is supplemented by a curbside cooperative through Apple Valley that you can sign up for certain recyclables that you picked up at the curb. You can see a few slides in that it's an award-winning program. We've won many, many awards for both litter control and recycling and they're listed there. If you get into participation, the drop-off program had 146,326 vehicles enter the three sites combined last year. You can see that's the second highest year. I maybe need to learn the number of these pages to make it easy. There's a discharge here that I'm looking at. That's, that's a slight decrease from last year, but nonetheless, it is the second highest year of participation in our program's 27-year history. As you look through the sites, you'll see that Grapevine Road had over 90,000 vehicles itself. It's clearly the largest, the site that has the largest participation. And it substantially increased last year while we saw a significant decrease in participation at the Inwood site.
And I can tell you why.
Dropped plastics.
Well, that and the road construction. Nobody wanted to go over that?
Okay. I frankly never fall about circles being built, but we hear from the public a lot that my biggest part of my waste stream, that can be recycled is plastics and you guys dropped it and it doesn't work there as much. Or we're gonna go to Grapevine or something. Hedgesville saw a small uptick. Of course, the number of vehicles that participate in Hedgesville is substantially lower than the other sites and that is only a reflection of the services that we offer there. That site is on kind of the corner of Plaza and it's a land that we're loaned, we're allowed to use, we don't even own it. It's only open one day a week and offers plastics, it only offer services for paper and glass and cans, litter, that's it. We once had a site up in North Berkeley and we always had a deep desire to reopen a site up there once land is located and once the budget supports it. You can see the curbside program participation, it's 3,011 people subscribe, 3,011 households subscribe to Apple Valley and Apple Valley simply picks the recycling up and they're required by their permit to bring it to the Berkeley County, for the concept.
It steadily increases it?
Yes, definitely. Any question on participation before I go on on tonnages?
What did that cost the homeowner for the Apple Valley?
You know, I think it's $4.
Between $4 and $5.
Extra per month?
Extra per month.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
And it's a select list also of items.
Of what you can leave.
Yeah, it's, it is plastics, paper, cans. We not accept glass for law of technical reasons behind the scenes for that. Any other questions? Tonnages then. So looking at tonnages, you can see that 2022 was a record-setting year. Over 6,000 tons, largest in the program's history. I will point out that that is still an estimated number. We have a, if you've been to our centers, you see we have some very large piles of brush. We're waiting for Mr. Tab to clear his schedule. He was given authorization to do that grinding. So we're estimating what's there until he provides the actual number. Still pretty confident that, in the number that I've put down there.
Is the brush generally clean? I mean, just brush or is there all the other things?
Now, you know, Mr. Cam Tab passed away. Before he passed away, he used them. You know, he does a lot of the brush grinding in the region and he always told us that ours were a municipal program, open to the public, that it was one of the cleanest. And our attendants are instructed to work and pull out. It's not that unusual for somebody to, you know, a hot day, be unloading brush and then throw in the water. We've got to dig that back out. So we, you know, work real hard to keep it clean. Yeah, I think for a program that's open to the public, it is considered very clean. So the next 10 pages are really just where I've lumped categories together for weight reasons. Similar categories like cans are on one chart and you can see how it's gone up and down over the years. Just slightly down last year.
Mixed paper.
Mixed paper is, yeah, it's, it's really collapsing. And I don't particularly have a good reason for that, a good explanation for that. I just.
Yeah, there's not much other use other than burning it or throwing it to trash.
I tend to understand that we as a society create less paper than we used to and I attribute it to that. Yeah, just, yeah, think of, exactly. It's a great example. Think about the newspaper, the hard copy newspaper, the number of subscribers that they have.
And magazines in general.
Paper is a tough topic for us these days. It was one of the string of bad luck things we had happen last year was ox paperboard flows. And that had substantial repercussions on us because our paper goes to Chambersburg Wastepaper in Chambersburg and they process it and mark it to Altamont. Now they're having to mark it further. So instead of us being paid $15 a ton, we're now paying $35 a ton. Yeah, so it's.
Does that include cardboard?
Cardboard is, is not included in that. Lynn, do you remember who's in charge of cardboard in Altamont? Just the transportation. Thank you. Well, plastics, it's explained. It is directly linked to the closure of Insorgo. We, we took a very broad range of plastics when Insorgo was opened. And once they closed, we had to re-market and the nearest affordable market took a much smaller range of plastic items. So in addition to that, we don't accept them at all in Inwood.
Right.
So it's only at the south, or only at the Grapevine roadside that we accept them and yet it collapsed.
So the Grapevine location that pretty much accepts the whole gamut of.
One through seven, one through seven, the most common items. But even when Insorgo was open, we took a broad range of mixed plastics that normally isn't in that one from seven. And we had the Inwood estate, you know, plastics.
Yeah, carpeting and everything.
Yeah, it really was the program, so.
When I go to your site, I mean, the largest bag always has plastic. I mean, it's just unbelievable how many plastic containers we cut through it and a couple of weeks in. But of course, there's no weight to it.
Right. And, and we, recycling programs across the country are often judged by your weight. And plastic's a tough one. And it's, it's a problem nationally. We're just not struggling here locally, but it's a problem nationally. Most of West Virginia and most of our counterparts across the state have dropped plastic. They just simply can't afford it. They can't find anyone. It's, it's a whole nother topic for a whole nother day, but yeah, plastics is a real problem.
It's one of the things you want to recycle for sure. It's absolutely top of the list in terms of what you want to recycle.
As you pointed out, it is a big boxy.
Wasn't it a world market that kind of shut down for China?
China didn't accept it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so China implemented, I think they called it the green fence. They were basically slowly cutting out recyclables that came in from other countries. And China wasn't the only country. They got a lot in the, in a lot of other countries. So that's where items are manufactured. Yeah, I mean, so I like the fact that China did what they did and that it's causing this pain because it's gonna force us to deal with our own waste stream like it shouldn't be, in my opinion. So organics is way up. As we urbanize, every clue I have tells us that number will continue to grow. We'll have more homes with more yard waste, more leaves, more brush. They have smaller lots and they will have no place to manage it. Those items are banned in landfills in West Virginia. And so they have to come to us for an alternative, a recycling alternative. Glass bottles saw a substantial increase.
All colors?
All colors, yes. All colors, all sites. Scrap metal there. There's a one that's marked appliances and there's non-farish metals. Saw a slight increase. This is a very important one to us because this is the only one, the only one that paid more than it costs. There were six or seven items that didn't receive enough revenue that it would pay for being one of them, that would pay for itself. It is now the lone item, this scrap metal. And of course, it's a commodity. It goes up and down.
And it's down right now.
And it's down right now. But as a general rule, over the years, it's been very good.
That place over there where the ice plant was probably took a lot of years.
It hurt.
Big time, I'm sure.
Yeah, it hurt.
Because you can get paid for it now right on this product.
And they also sent you a 1099?
Yeah.
Oh, is that right? I didn't know that. Income. So electronics, we have a very comprehensive electronics program, pretty much any electronics item with just a couple of exceptions. We accept, we do charge for computer monitors and televisions, but the other items in the electronic spectrum are free. And you can see that number has also fell over the years. That is predominantly due to what I term lightweighting. TVs are just a lot lighter than they used to be. And as those old CRT monitors move their way out of our area and are replaced by the lighter ones, we send down the road as many trucks as we did 10 years ago. It's just very light. The volume's the same. And then a few miscellaneous items like batteries, EFL lamps.
That must be a lot of lamps, 1,500 pounds.
We take the, we accept the little curlicue compact lamp and we also take four footers. Four footers go in these kits, the whole 1,500 lamps. We send out several kits. Liquids, we, we're probably the only entity in the county that accepts antifreeze, free or recycling. We also say, take oil, use automotive oil. And then, and then you can see a slide there on the tonnage that we receive from Apple Valley's curbside program.
With liquids, you take oil, not, I mean, the vegetable oil?
We do. It's not in that category, but that's, that's considered an organic. But we do also, good point, we do also accept cooking oil. Big topic after Thanksgiving. So if you, if you look at the chart titled Recycling Makes Sense, that is a, basically a landfill avoidance chart. So if you take the number of tons and what it would have cost if you theoretically could put those tons in a landfill, last year, we saved the public a little over $300,000. Which is substantially less than the amount of tax money that we use to do, to make that savings for the public. Any questions on recycling before I go to litter?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
If, if you're a person that saves your aluminum cans, where can you sell them?
Zuckerman's used to do it. Of course, years ago, we were in that business, you know, but.
Place, place in Charlestown.
Is that by in Berkeley?
Ransum, Ransum, Motome Melles. Very good. 45 cents a pound.
Is that what it is now?
You might have to wait a little bit, but it's good.
I don't do it. I bring it to you, but I knew that it was a big deal back years ago.
I used to go to Hagerstown, but it's just, I now I'm better.
I thought Zuckerman's did it one time then.
They, they did. Zuckerman's has closed.
They're closed.
A lot of recycling entities in this region have closed. Southern scrap also went down. Zuckerman's has been around 100 years.
Yeah.
And there were a few over in Washington County. And so just take the impact of that. Zuckerman's is who our glass used to go to. And when they closed a couple of years ago, we had to redirect to the next nearest market, which is Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh?
Pittsburgh. So we literally had to figure out how to make it work to transport that cleared glass to Pittsburgh. And, you know, we pretty much break even with it. But, you know, it was a challenge. Any other questions?
That's probably the worst thing you handle is glass, isn't it, that you have to deal with the glass?
Worse.
Just in terms of handling it, safety, safety of it, breaking up it, the weight of it, I mean, it's.
And it's, and it's the only item of recycling spectrum that you can take one glass jar and run it through the recycling process and make one glass jar. There is no loss in material to do that. So it's the ideal item for recycling, but yes, it's heavy, so transportation cost is more. And you're always worried about the glass.
Now, Canoff Insulation, I mean, I've had, we have air for different things, but they have mountains of crushed glass up there in Houston. I wonder if they, the recipients of what's been recycled.
They are. We've actually confirmed that. That our material will go to Pittsburgh, it's outside of Pittsburgh, to an area called, a facility called Harial Products. And that is one of the places that.
They bring it back to.
So yeah, literally, if you recycle that Grapevine road, that material may end up here in Inwood, being used to make something. being used to make something, yeah. Any other questions on recycling or jump into litter? All right, so we have a litter control program, of course. For the past nine years, uh, Berkeley County has won either first or second place in the state's Make It Shine Clean County Contest. Uh, something I'm very proud of. We will not come in first or second place next year because I understand they're doing away with the contest. So maybe they will replace it with something. They, they announced at a conference in the fall that it would, they would not be happy.
Guess we just can't make it any shinier, huh?
Lot of, uh, litter statistics. You can see the complaints come into us that, um, Ms. Lashley handles. She will decide whether they need to go to the sheriff's office for enforcement or whether it's something that be handled by the roadside crew or the stream cleanup crew. Uh, or if it needs to go to the state program called PPOD, which we'll see in a second here. So you can see, I guess that's about 20-some complaints went last year to the sheriff's office for enforcement. There are 43, uh, active adopt-a-highway groups in Berkeley County that still, um, are willing to take the risks that go out along our roads and are very busy roads and we pick up, we pick up litter and report those numbers, um, back to the Department of Highways. I mentioned the PPOD program, Pollution Prevention and Open Dump Program. You can see they cleaned up nine open dumps in Berkeley County last year. Those, that is typically reserved for large-scale, very difficult-to-access, uh, open dumps. Somebody backs up in a corner of a road and goes down a steep bank where it's going to take equipment to get it out, we send that to PPOD. They, they have the funds and the ability to do that.
So this is not a state program?
It is a state program. But they have no local eyes, so we're the local eyes. Literally, we, with us reporting to them, uh, open dumps. In my time, which is a long time, in the solid waste authority, we, there's, there's been over 200 open dumps cleaned up in Berkeley County, paid for by the PPOD.
Do all counties have a solid waste authority?
Fifty.
Do.
And then there's a couple that have regional solid waste authorities. Otomac Highlands has a regional solid waste authority. There are seven, six or five counties have formed. Tire collection, you can see last year, we restarted the two, the tire collection events after being, uh, shut down due to COVID. We got, uh, in two events, 7,348 tires. Part of this budget is to repeat those events. By the way, the PPOD program that I just mentioned pays for the disposal of those tires as long as we provide a site and provide some basic staffing and traffic flow control.
And that'll continue?
That is going to continue in this budget, yes. Of course, we have a stream cleanup program. Once a week, mostly year-round, one or two people will go out, climb into Back Creek or the Eppen Creek or Creek Lake. And, and, uh, that, last year, uh, was 719 items was pulled out, either bags or tires or just large bulky items. We actually had, um, a very good year in the streams. The water just cooperated. And it should be down when our schedule worked and getting in the creek sometimes can be tough. Roadside folks, um, of course, this is predominantly run by Mike Lang. Uh, he, his crew brings the waste to us. And any, if it's a tire or any item that is recycled, the solid waste authority takes responsibility for it. If it's any other item, uh, it goes into a container provided free of charge to the county by Apple Valley. And Apple Valley has emptied 187 containers in the last, uh, since 2018 when we started the program. And they have emptied them for free. And it's getting pretty close to three quarters of a million of them. So they have been a great, great business partner for this effort.
How come it's down?
Well, you know, Mike and, there was a, um, subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago and Mike, and Mike talked about that, that it was just COVID got into his staff or we get into the community service.
I know there weren't, it can't be that much cleaner.
No, it's not that at all. And in fact, sadly, he reported that the amount of litter per mile is roughly double what it was for years.
Really?
And of course, we're all scratching our heads to the water. No more traffic. Anyone knows the answer to that.
More traffic, the more litter.
Certainly, that's an aspect of it. We're not alone in it, though. Because I'll read it in the, the industry magazines, that litter is up all over the country.
Disrespect.
That's certainly a part of it.
Yeah.
Absolutely a part of it. You should, um, this is a little off-topic, but, um, starting February 1st, which is tomorrow, we're going to start, we, we got some grant funds and there starts a radio ad. And you'll maybe hear them. I appreciate the feedback, but it's a little over a thousand.
So, so Mike's the one in charge of the roadside?
Well, Mike has, uh, the responsibility of the community service program.
So all the people that are picking it up are community service?
Correct.
People?
Well, that's not administered by the sheriff's department.
It is by here.
That's one of your departments.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and so there's no inmates that are ever used, it's just community service element?
Pretty standard in West Virginia, you can't get an inmate out of the jail.
Yeah.
Regional jails would just not allow them.
Put the regional jails in place, right, right.
There's laws that enable that to happen, but the regional jail folks, I mean, they need that support in-house.
I, I just passed them yesterday. They were picking up because it was a beautiful day, 58 degrees or whatever, and we were out doing it. So I think it's a wonderful program, something. But it's all community service.
It's all community service. It's programmed, it's a council.
There's not a lack of people available to do it then? Because plenty of people would-
I can't speak to that.
Well, it, it depends. Yeah. Um, you know, our community service program not only takes care of litter control, but you know, like, maintenance at Roundhouse, you know, all the grounds, all the parks, or all the, uh, ground statements here except for Pike Side Waterway and Sports Menace, all of them. We used to contract that out. That's all done through community service now, as well as even, um, even the grounds of, uh, the Roundhouse, some health with parks, some recreation.
The new Morgan Park.
Yeah, yeah, we cleaned up the Morgan Park, you know, senior services, that's all done through community service.
And next slide is a pesticide program. This is a cooperative with the department, the state department of agriculture. We're, um, one day a year will collect pesticides. Predominantly for farmers. Even though we do get a lot of homeowner participation, you know, that ground up or something. Anything, any questions for litter control? There are a couple, three charts there on Insorgo. Of course, Insorgo is a private facility that's located on 12 acres of land that they leased from us. And, and of course, everybody here knows that they closed in April. Uh, and they spent the vast majority of last year cleaning out what was left behind. The company that cleaned it out was not Insorgo. It was one partner of Insorgo, it was Apple Valley. I don't know what they spent. I'm sure it's a half a million or more. They spent a bunch of money cleaning it till it was out. And I had a meeting last week with the CEO of, uh, Apple Valley and he indicated that behind the scenes, there are some substantial progress being made on transferring that facility that we've used, um, to, from the majority owner, who is a New York-based company called Renover, to Apple Valley. And, uh, that it's not a done deal. It's like, it is substantially in play. And he had an optimistic tone, um, and believed that, um, it was, you know, possible that we could start seeing lease revenues from that facility again as soon as four months.
So you own the facility?
We own the land.
The land?
The facility is private.
Okay.
We've been very patient, frustratingly patient with that situation. It's been a lot of work and, uh, it wasn't supposed to be that way. It's been a lot of work on us. But, um, quite frankly, Steve, in our lease agreement, we have the right to take the reserve.
Is that right?
And, um, it's not something I want to do. It's not something that our board wants to do. But it would be a huge undertask for a small board to do that. So we're being as patient as we can, private partners. There, I just gave a tour last week to one of the largest waste, the fuel manufacturing companies in the United States. They are very interested in that place. Apple Valley is very interested in that place. I think some partnership should all end in place, uh, to bring that place back up.
What shape is the building? Because I know it's, it's got some damage from the fire.
Right, there was two fires, uh, one in July and one in October. Uh, substantially, the building is fine. There, there was overhead cranes that move around automatically, that, it's trashed. The overhead train, uh, one fire was under one crane and the other fire was under the other. Crane is gone, but the, the building is fine. Uh, now, uh, there was the effort to fight the fires. There were windows punched out. There were holes cut in the building and things like that, uh, that will need to be addressed.
Has the technology changed?
I'm sorry?
Has the technology changed much? If somebody wants to take the building over and redo it and ship a product out?
There are four or five different kinds of technologies that make what's called SRF, solid recovered fuel. Insorgo was one of those technologies. So it depends on the players. If they want to use the Insorgo technology, they will have to partner up with Insorgo in Italy to do that. If they don't, they can gut it and put in somebody else's technology. Folks that I gave, that I mentioned, that I gave a tour to last week, they make SRF in two facilities in the United States. They do not use Insorgo's technology.
But Insorgo built the building?
They did.
And paid for it?
Yeah.
There was some discussion at the sewer board thing and the work, work guy was there too. He's on the post, we're discussing about they owe money from Insorgo.
Right.
What to do. It seemed like it was a stickler issue for them.
Yeah, um, Insorgo apparently owes a lot of money. Electricity was cut off.
People.
They certainly owe us funds. I don't know that, owe the water board money, the water board. Yeah, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, Greg was there though, so he mentioned both, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we were very surprised to see them close, quite frankly, because, uh-
But there's no chance they're coming back in the old days, right?
Insorgo themselves?
Yeah.
There is.
There is?
There is. Uh, they're one of the entities expressing interest in, in coming back. Who I would say is a low probability of coming back because the company, Insorgo, West Virginia was made up of five companies. The largest owner is a company called Renover. They own 90% of Insorgo, West Virginia. I don't see Renover coming back. I don't see the solid waste authority willing to do business with them after what they did to Berkeley County. Anybody else, I think is-
Before you move off of there, I'd like to thank you and your board and your cooperation that you were able to garner through Apple Valley Waste, the state of West Virginia DEP and the local fire departments, uh, in handling that situation. Because it could have ended up being a true environmental disaster. Very critical to that neighborhood.
Yeah, vermin alone.
It just, thanks for getting that situation cleared up.
Yeah, we lost a lot of sleep over that. Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, folks have been around here long enough, all compared to the Inwood tire. Very close to being that kind of a mess. And, and I, and I wish Darren Rindell was here, he's the CEO of Apple Valley. He stood tall. Apple Valley stood tall and said, look, you know, we're not the responsible party here, but we, we are a business partner with this community and we can't let this happen. And they knew they had the assets to, um, funding to get it out in, in a, over a period of months. They did a big biostabilization haul that had all that trash.
I want to say I appreciate what you do, because I went out there one day, a couple of months ago, and there's Clint out there with this thing on working. And I said, what in the world? And he said, well, somebody called in and he took a day off from work to come and work at recycling center. Obviously, he's a-
Hands-on.
Volunteer. He didn't get paid for it. And, um, I appreciate recycling to me is a, is an important part of our community and y'all do a great job for the resources you have to work with. And I thank you for that.
Appreciate it. We've, we've, we've had to lay off some people. And that's made our staffing tough. We had a person out like two weeks ago, COVID. I don't have a backup person. That person's been laid off. We had to scramble, make it work. But, yeah. Any other questions? No?
Thank you very much, Clint. Oh. Budget, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
You start hearing talking about mud.
Let's say we submitted a budget request for $175,125 for the recycling program. And frankly, that's substantially higher than it has been in the past. And that is driven by the, the loss of a revenue from Insorgo. We thought we could bridge it to the Penrose deal. Those that were here know that, uh, a year ago, we thought we had a deal involving land down in Inwood that was going to bring us some money. That has withdrawn. But when you combine the, uh, the law, we, the, you look at just the loss of Insorgo, which was $125,000, uh, in, in lease revenue. Unfortunately, uh, and very frustrating for our board, we've had to substantially ask for a higher amount of money. Litter control, not so much. Uh, we have, uh, we're asking for $15,936. That is roughly about $5,000 increase. However, the reason for that increase is driven specifically because last year, we had the several special events attributed to the 250th celebration. Taking bulky goods, for example. And, uh, we did a county-wide cleanup event for the first time. And we, and, you know, we found that it's something I think we'd like to repeat, that they were, uh, the, the public just used them. And, uh, there's a substantial issue, Mike Lang can confirm this, with bulky items, couches and things like that, being thrown along the roads and such. And there is no real alternative, other than to landfill them. There is no alternative programs. And maybe this is a way to help, um, if, if the council has the funds, uh, maybe this is a way, we'd like to repeat those bulky good, uh, special events. And, and the tire events that I mentioned, and the paper shred events, and the county-wide cleanup event, just to keep the momentum.
Morgan Town burns them.
I, I hear that.
Every football game.
Well, that's when they win and that had been all over. They're down a little bit.
Yeah.
The couches are piling up.
Yeah. Any questions on the numbers?
Hey, surprise, all the garbage we got in the park system all the time. People leave everything, it's just unbelievable.
You may have said this earlier, but how long do you think, and if it's possible to re-lease that building?
I think I had a meeting last week with, uh, CEO of Apple Valley and he gave me sort of a summary of the behind-the-scenes negotiation. He felt it was four months out. So you're going-
They would take it if it were four months out.
Correct.
That's pretty quick.
So, so if that happens, our income will go substantially up. And the amount that we would need would go down if it happens. If it happens on that, it will happen, but if it'll happen in that time. Uh, so you, you raise a very obvious point, that it may be appropriate in four, five, or six months for me to reappear and say, look, things have changed. We're a little better off than we were. If not, this budget was presented from the perspective of that it didn't happen. Didn't happen.
You're hoping for the same amount of, of fee structure there that you had for some of-
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next is, no applicants for the board review?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next is a little bit early, well, not quite, Mary Beth Blair with Mountain State Apple Harvest Festival, budget presentation.
Hello, thank you so much. I'm going to bring up two people with me, if you don't mind.
Nope, not at all.
I need moral support.
Shelley, whatever we give them, we're taking from your budget.
Oh, gosh.
Say any moral support.
Come on, hear me on, that's right.
Hey, Kristy.
How you doing?
I thought it'd be nice to bring you a magazine from our last festival that was held in October, and just to let you know, first of all, thank you for your support over the years. We greatly appreciate every dime you've ever given us. Every penny goes to great use, as you probably know. We are a completely all volunteer organization, no paid staff, so every blood, sweat, and tear that goes into our festival is done by volunteers, mostly our board, but also an incredible support system from BCT. Kristy is our treasurer of our board, but she also represents Bank of Charlestown, and they, a couple of years ago, came on as our presenting sponsor. And not only do they provide financial support, they provide an incredible, incredible amount of support in the way of people, human support. I mean, we have all of their staff manning the various events throughout the four-day festival. It has been such an incredible partnership. I also have Shelley with me as well. She's been a board member longer than I have been. She is now our secretary. So in case you have questions that I can't answer, because I'm all about the PR, I'll tell you all the great, wonderful things about the Apple Harvest Festival, but if you want to know numbers or specific things, you're going to, I'm going to need these ladies to help me. So again, I just thank you for your support, and we, I come here today on behalf of Susan Stodden, who is our president, has been for years and years and years, and she is out of town today, so she asked that we present on our board's behalf. We are asking for $5,000, and primarily what we would like to use those funds for would be for concentrated mainly towards our parade, which is probably our highest profile community event for the county, most, you know, largest attended by our citizens, residents in Berkeley County. And believe it or not, it does take a lot of money to put on a parade, from our grand marshal to, and that, those costs are, you only want to know what those costs are, but it does help chip away at that fee, but it also goes to pay for our judges and our prizes and just all of the many different resources that it takes, the promotions of the event itself. Just to give you a little recap, last year, we did incorporate, if you look at the magazine, you'll see that we did try to tie in with the county celebration of 250 years. We celebrated 250 years of apple heritage in our community, although we don't go back completely. According to my research, the apple heritage isn't fully back 250 years from the beginning of the county, but it was close, it was in the 1900s. That was interesting to do that research and see when the heritage actually, when the industry kicked up in this area. So it was nice to tie in with what the county was doing as well. So we did do that in honor of what you all were doing as well. Last year was unique. It was nice because we came back after the pandemic, and we kind of, we did a merging for our festival. If you, if you recall, in 2020, we only had a virtual 5K and a few other virtual events, but then in 2021, we did half and half, we did some events, and they were new, that could be held outdoors. So this past year in 2020, we went back to our full festival, doing all of our traditional events, plus we incorporated some of the new events that were outdoor events from 2021. We added and expanded to our festival last year. One of the things that was really well received by our residents was the rodeo down at the youth fairgrounds, because we all know that Berkeley County residents love a good rodeo. They show that at the youth fair every year, and that's the biggest night of their gate income, and we saw that as well. We pretty much sold out the stadium that night, and we plan to bring them back again. We have a lot of things that we're planning, same things, of course, from years past, and today, we are just, we love to make, to have you all be a part of what we're doing. We do get funding, as you know, from the city, as I said, from BCT, and then we also, we work hard as a volunteer board to go out and get corporate support in the community. So we don't rely just on grant money to fund our efforts. I think that's pretty much all that I had to share, but I'm happy to entertain any questions. My treasurer and our secretary can answer them as well, and I'll take those now.
Do you cooperate with other agencies like CVB and?
Yes, so Mark Jordan is, who's the director of CVB, is also on our board and has been for many years, and so we do work with them, and they promote our festival. We work with the state tourism office too, and I, last year, we did interviews on their statewide radio show, and they, they promote us in all of their, you know, in publications and promotions as well, so yes, we definitely do that. And of course, we work with Main Street Martinsburg for the events that are downtown, and they promote us. We try to work with all local agencies in the promotion of that. Anybody else?
Anything else?
No.
It's always a great event downtown.
Thank you.
Remember the inception of it, it started out the air guard.
I know, it's changed so much. And certainly over the years, I mean, a lot of people would like for it to be out there again, and we can't for a lot of different reasons. We've transitioned over the years to where we've had it, and it's, it's tough, because you have to have a place with parking and a lot of space, and we're trying to make sure that when we, we have events that are in different locations in our county as well, so that it gives everyone an opportunity to do something if they can't be at everything. But it's a pretty intense four days. I don't know if any of you have ever attended every single event, have you?
My daughter's in the courtroom.
Well, then you, you have been immersed in it. Once you are, it is, it is, it's a lot to keep up with.
Really wonderful weekend, we thoroughly enjoyed the whole weekend.
Good. Anyone who has been a part of it as a parent of someone involved, I think can say that. It's, you don't really experience it until you have someone who's involved at that intense level, but.
Daughter, couple nieces.
Yeah. I think one of the things I also feel like as a county that it warrants a funding from the county level is, to me, as someone who's grown up here, I feel like it is so important that the heritage of our community, one of the earliest things in our history that made us successful, and still to this day in the state of West Virginia, is one of the largest producing apple areas of the state and even on the east coast. I feel like our students need to have that put in front of them. I don't know that it's taught in the schools and in the history classes so much. I think with the festival, a lot of teachers do incorporate promotions and events and encourage that during the school week. So I feel like this festival is one of those things that we do on a yearly basis to remind our community and new people who come here, what this, what we were founded on, and just the beauty of our, of our community, the apple orchards that still remain, I feel like we do a great job of keeping that history alive, and I, I feel like that makes it a very important part of Berkeley County history and something we should continue to do.
There was a, in the D book, I think number three down at the courthouse, George Washington gave a land grant for the first apple tree planting and certain types of trees. Matt Umstead has it all.
Oh, yes.
If there's any information that needs to talk about, he can, he can do it for you.
He definitely can. I really appreciate his hard work. I worked with him on the chamber image book recently to get all the history for, for that, and he certainly has done an incredible job at, at that.
I would like the apple, always been a dream of mine to have the apple harvest festival coordinate with the other great crop that's raised in Berkeley County, watercress.
Oh, watercress. Wow, yes.
I don't know how, how we rank with the other jurisdictions that produce watercress.
Sure.
But we have a watercress farm in Berkeley County, used to be several, and now it's down to one, and you know, always, man, we should really.
I tell you, that's probably a fact most people don't know, that it even exists, the last one exists.
Yeah, you can see it from the interstate, you can see it from Route 11, of course.
Sure.
And you know, man, we've never done anything.
An apple salad. Maybe an apple salad.
That's good.
To encourage the watercress industry.
Well, being a former Appleman, as Kristy was.
Yes.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate the heritage. If it had not been for the Muslin Foundation, which was the largest apple-producing plant in the world, we would not have a high school to go to, at least, I mean, I guess eventually somebody would have built one, but.
Right.
It was through their generosity of the corporation and the employees that built that facility where we were able to go to school, so.
Great history there too.
Well, they from Edgesville, you know.
We were going to vote for them.
Well, we appreciate any favor you show us in the festival to help us do a better job of what we're doing, and we thank you for the opportunity to present today. And if there are any other questions of our treasurer or secretary or myself, I will thank you, and we will look forward to your letter.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay. The shop has got more energy than I ever dreamed of. She's, she runs the whole youth fair thing down here, that whole weekend, this and Little League, I mean, she does, it's unbelievable the time she puts back in this community. That's why she got elected so easily. Yep. Next up is Joe Elliott, executive director for Community Alternatives to Violence.
No, sir, you skipped.
I skipped one, Rob Blair, I'm sorry, Main Street Martinsburg, I did, well, I saw two Blairs, I'm sorry.
Easy career to do, I think.
I thought we scratched Main Street out, didn't we?
No. I did make a slight tweak to our budget, so I wanted to give the little summary budget.
Messing up all kinds of stuff.
We made a subtraction to an event, well, moved it till next year, because we want to plan it the right way. Actually, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Robert.
And before I talk about any of this stuff, do you find, I want to introduce Raven Lamb.
Hello.
I should say everything in here, but.
Raven just joined our team in, what, September?
August.
August. And, you know, I, I do everything a second time, and I think to myself, how in the world did I do it before without Raven's help? So sure many of you knew her, her family, so I'll let her talk real quick.
Well, this is kind of nerve-wracking for me. I feel like, I feel so official standing up here and behind this, but my name is Raven. I am born and raised in Martinsburg, West Virginia, recently joined Main Street in August. I feel like Robbie and I kind of divide and conquer all the tasks together, so of course, I couldn't leave him coming in here alone today. So yeah, I'm here to join him with.
Welcome.
Thanks, Raven. I'll just kind of jump in. Last year was my first opportunity to really introduce myself to most of you. Obviously, we have some new people here at the table today, so nice to see you, as usual, Steve and HD, the rest of you guys, nice to see you again. See you around at stuff quite often. So as you'll see on the sheet that I gave you, there is a slight tweak to one of the events that we were going to try to put together, you know, after doing a year of events, one of the things that we wanted to add into the fold was something celebrating the music heritage of Appalachia and sort of the region. And of course, there's so many great venues that people do music festivals around our county, but nothing quite to that scale had ever been done downtown, to my knowledge. So we were kicking around the can to do things, maybe at the Groundhouse, at Boydville, maybe multi-sites, and Christian Lopez was helping me, you know, just try to understand the scope of it. And when we met with the board, after I had submitted our proposal, board thought, you know, hey, let's do this the right way, if we're going to do it, we're going to defer till next year, do a punt. But with that in mind, the reason really behind adding another thing, you know, I felt like last year was event after event after event that we added, one of the reasons why we did want to add another event, I'll take it back to my days in Bible college, one of the things they said is if you, if you need some, if you need more money or you need more resources, don't pray for more money and resources, pray for more work, figure out a way to earn that stuff. So adding another team member, and you know, with the, the growing needs, you know, events cost more money, everything costs more money, you all know the current state of things around the world. Our thought process was, hey, we're going to put something together, do what we know how to do, put together a great cultural event that brings people into downtown Martinsburg. It's kind of fitting, you know, I know mom, there's an obvious reason why it's fitting, and I followed up my mom, but the other non-obvious reason is, always my pitch to downtown is, without apples in downtown, we're just a bunch of interstate exits. So without apple harvest in your downtown, we gotta, we gotta celebrate those things that make us unique, but.
I got to tell you, a project I was doing up here in front of the federal court building, and every day, this guy would walk by with his dog, and we were hitting all kinds of rock, and the hardest rock I ever hit in Berkeley County. And he says, well, you know, this county is famous for two things, and it's rocks and socks.
Rocks and socks. That's true. That's true.
And the rocks are still here, but the socks are gone.
The socks are gone. The socks are gone, and remind me, the Norborn Car Factory, I was talking with somebody about that, the county, the Norwalk, excuse me. County still possesses a car from that, right?
No, the Norwalk Car Club does.
Okay.
Which is in Hagerstown. The foundation.
In Hagerstown now?
Sharpsburg.
We're working to get it back.
We're working to get it back.
Okay, well, I'd like to talk about that sometime, there's a.
It's worth a trip over there to see it.
Yeah, okay.
Unbelievable.
Only one that's left.
The only one.
Jay Leno wants it.
Jay Leno, wow.
Well, he, he almost got it, but we were able to get it back here to Martinsburg
before he got his bid in, which if he's not careful on a motorcycle getting burned up, he may not have anything for a while, so I'm glad he's doing okay.
I didn't know any of this stuff. Learning about cars and Jay Leno, I can't counsel. I know.
We're well-rounded up.
Yeah, you're telling me. Well, I don't know where I was going or where I had left off, but.
Didn't mean to get you off.
No, that's okay, happens all the time.
He does them all the time.
Well, I think where I was going, going with all that is, the underlying, you know, process, thought process behind what we're trying to accomplish in 2023, we've established some really exciting cultural events that I think are pretty important as we continue to grow as a county, and it's my belief, our board's belief, that, you know, having things centralized, not only geographically, but, you know, philosophically, so to speak, in the downtown and economic district like our downtown is pretty important to the growth in the trajectory of where we're taking this thing. You look at all the surrounding communities around us that are experiencing growth and sustaining growth, they all, you know, accumulate into a nice downtown. You know, I think the, the festivals and the things like that that we've been doing are a good, a good reason to change people's minds, and I think I shared a little bit about that last year with you all, that that's the thought process behind a lot of it, is we're going to change some folks' minds about downtown, about safety, about, you know, a lot of concerns like that. But in the process, we're also raising money for our organization so that we can do things, like I said, offer a competitive, right now, we don't offer benefits, but those are things that we're hoping to be able to afford so that we can remain competitive in the job market and as employers, you know, and as we're aiding other businesses, we don't just want to talk the talk, we want to be able to take care, take care of our own house in that sense. One of the things, though, that I'm very, very proud of in this past year, looking back through, through the years past, hasn't always been the case, but last year, if you account for the annual funding alone from, now, obviously, we had ARPA funds and other one-time supplementary funding from both of our partners at the city and the county, but if you take those out and you just talk about annual funding, annual allotments, I'm really proud to report that we, from fundraising efforts and then, you know, generated funds at our events, we surpassed what, what was given to us from what the city and the county combined, and that's something that I'm really proud of. I think that it's not really fair to come up here and ask something if we're not willing to, you know, put our money where our mouth is and go out and work for something as well. So, you know, those, those costs go a long way, and not only continuing to build on what we've been doing in terms of the cultural events, but we are here in the next couple of weeks going to be finalizing some stuff to up our membership. That's our, my big goal this year, now that Raven has come under, under the umbrella of everything that we're doing here, she's really got some of the event planning and coordinating stuff down. she's really got some of the event planning and coordinating stuff down. And those things help us, help us pay the bills. They, they all generate some money for us. But what I'm hoping to focus more on in this year are two, two sides of our four-pronged approach, which if you're not aware of the National Main Street's four-pronged approach, is promotion, economic vitality, organization, and design, excuse me. Design being, you know, the aesthetic of our downtown. And that's a big one that I'm hoping to tackle this year. There's a few, you know, just improvement things that instead of asking the city to do it, we're just going to see if they'll give us some permits and we'll go out and do it ourselves to, to clean up the appearance of our downtown. And then also the organizational side of it with membership I just spoke to. We're hoping to shift our approach from asking businesses. We all know the, the outlook for 2023, at least the first couple of quarters, isn't great. And I'm of the mind that asking businesses to pay for us to give them benefits, really, it's about our downtown. And that's, that's the end of it. If you're in downtown, we're going to support you and we're going to do what we can to, to promote you and get you out there. So shifting from a membership model that is really formulated around asking businesses to, to pay to participate in downtown, we're hoping to offer a really cool product from a tourism perspective for people that are coming to visit downtown. And then from, just from an individual's perspective, for all the folks that live in the county, you know, kind of a passport model of come downtown and you build up your downtown points and you enter to win giveaways and all sorts of stuff. But with the underlying idea being that if we're going to grow, obviously, it's a similar model that you all are using. We're going to grow, we got to focus on the houses and, and the individuals that fill those houses and making a better quality of life for them. So, you know, we can't, we can't raise our budget. We can't raise our, we can't expect more businesses to come in unless we really target the folks that sponsor, or frequent those businesses and, and attend those events. So figuring out a way for us to grow our, our membership base on a grassroots individual level is going to be our big focus this year. So those are some of the things that we are hoping to accomplish with the help of you all, our partners, and of course with our private, private investments and sponsorships and all that other stuff. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You brought it up, so I'll continue it. Downtown, which is like Eighth Street Market. And this is, of course, common with all downtowns is storefronts, empty storefronts. I hate to see empty storefronts in Martinsburg. And now that the florist has moved, you know, that's empty. Blue White Grill is closed.
Florist is getting renovated there.
Are they?
We have a boutique-in hairstylist going in there, so it's a combination, but.
Do you seek out, see the vacant storefronts, know who owns the building or who manages the building? And you, do you work with them to try to get occupancy of, of those facilities?
That's a great question. So one of the things that we did last year with some of our state funding, and our state funding is not funding. They have money that they will pay for things, but it has to be stuff that Charleston has already predetermined and pre-decided. So they were like, you know, what, what, Main Street Martinsburg hasn't used any of these funds for years, whatever. I was like, whoa, what, what actually can we do? One of the things that we did with that was we, we did a survey recently and we got over two thousand, almost two thousand, excuse me, responses to that. And we now have, and we're presenting it on March 8th. All of you are welcome to, to join us over at the garage space that's getting fixed up to, to be a food hall on the corner of Raleigh and King Street. We're taking the results from that survey and we only targeted people in Berkeley County. Because of course the draws that, that are going to be tourist-driven, meaning they're coming from outside across the river, from Virginia, what have you, they're going to be a little bit different. We wanted to think of what will serve the people that sleep here in Berkeley County. We, we got some really good feedback from that, really good data. Over forty-seven people mentioned that they wanted to start a business in downtown. We had another thirty-some that said they wanted to expand the business or relocate to downtown, like they have an existing business. And then from there, we have breakdowns of what kind of, what are the top three things that people want? What, how likely are they to frequent all these other things? And then they had add-ons of what I would like at those things, be it retail and then also restaurant space. So we have some pretty good data to back that up. And it's even broken down. I know some people in the Facebook comments were pretty upset that we asked what their income was. It was a totally anonymous deal, but we even have that demographic broken down so that, hey, if I want to, if I'm telling somebody, you know, this many people said they wanted a bakery in Martinsburg, I can tell them, well, also it's people that have disposable income that would frequent that. The people said that they make X amount in their household. So we have some pretty good data and we're working on a plan to activate some of those spaces.
Has any thought, and I know this has been tossed around for a couple of years, a walking mall like Winchester has, which means relocating Route 11. Has any, is that under consideration or?
I would say that that is above my pay grade. And that's a question for Mr. Baldwin and City Council, but.
It's not come down to Main Street Martinsburg?
It's something that I, I would definitely be in favor of. It, it's a, I mean, it's a total double-edged sword. I think you have probably, well, I won't get into numbers because I'm, I'm a numbers guy, but you have a lot of businesses that aren't really structured for that sort of traffic. They rely on the pass-bys of, of a downtown. So it's a really tough call, you know, because do you want to see the businesses there?
The West Street Department of Transportation, too, so that would be the big hurdle.
From what I understand, the idea would be that they would probably have to take it all the way to eighty-one to, to be able to do something like that. You'd have to take over that. It's a tough ask, but there are lots of other strategies that I have been looking into on some of the side streets. One of the, I mean, this is just how my brain tends to go, like, all over the place. One of the things I found fascinating the other day is, you know, we focus everything on King and Queen and that being, you know, the center of downtown, so to speak. And that is typical of a courthouse to be right in the middle of your downtown. But if you look at, A, North and South Queen Street break up on Burke Street. That's where the, the changeover happens. But also, you know, when we do our festivals, it makes it really clunky for us to do things on the square right now because, shoot, the businesses over by Ray Street are, are a hike away. So it, it's kind of an interesting layout of our downtown, but that, you know, what would be an easy fix to have that stuff walkable and, and that's the center of everything. There's just different creative options that we can explore. I've thought, thought heavily about some activation ideas, maybe along some of the side streets or even the pass-through streets on College and Spring Street.
You got Winchester Avenue. That may be changing in a couple of years.
Sure, sure. And, and that's something I always like to remind folks, especially in our newest rewrite of our bylaws. Our boundaries aren't just Queen Street. Our boundaries are from railroads over by the mills to the railroads east on, I guess that's Water Street, by the Adam Stevens House where they converge behind Aspen Hall. And then the Boydville District is our southern district. So we got a lot of commercial district to work with in the Main Street District. But yes, I mean, definitely thought of, and I hear it all the time, not without its hurdles, but there are things to be done.
I think it's definitely something you can push. It doesn't need to be pushed enough. There are a couple of businesses opposed to it who believe that they need the pass-by.
Right.
For business. But if the claims are true, what they say that people drive from a thousand miles away to visit their business, are they going to turn around and go back a thousand miles because they had to walk three blocks to get to the business?
Right.
I doubt it.
Right.
And with the Raleigh Street extension, you could easily change that to Route 11. So it's possible to be done, but it, it takes enough people pressing the issue to make it happen.
Sure.
You know, and that's my opinion on that. I think if you guys push it.
Yeah.
It could happen.
No, I'm a big proponent of the round, roundabout. I know it's a highly controversial thing in this area. Certainly out down in Nookwood. I hear, hear all about it.
I don't have to stop. I don't like to stop for nothing. That's a waste of my time.
Right.
You're good with all the accidents occur, though, that's a problem.
Well, I think a simple solution there, if you're, if you're going down a rabbit hole and you're dreaming, would just be two roundabouts on each end. And then College Street's already southbound one-way and Spring Street's as small as one lane anyways, so you might as well just toss them around that way and keep you going on a roundabout. It'd be smoother. It'd be quicker. You wouldn't have all the stoplights in downtown. But like I said, that's a little above my pay grade.
I don't know. It sounds like you're getting a handle on it.
I like the thing. I like the dream.
I think, I think you and your, your, now your new staff and your volunteers have done a lot of hard work and been very successful. If you ever want to plan a party, find out from him because he picks the best weather days to do something.
I'm gonna wear my lucky tie today with some clovers.
Pick a good weather day and sell beer. That's the key.
But you've, you've done extremely well. I participated in, in almost, we didn't, we didn't participate in the Wine Fest. I don't know why, but every event that, that you all have had downtown has been very enjoyable, been very successful, great crowds, people coming in, socialized. Just have a good day. And, and that's what they've been. So good job.
And on that note, I appreciate Eddie, the CBB reporting to us, which was it, the Food Truck Fest? The Food Truck Fest, which in its second year, I mean, the difference was just stark, how many more people came. And that reflected in our sales and all the other businesses as well. But the CBB has the capability of pinging cell phones, I guess, actually I'm told. And they pulled data from that day of folks that were in downtown Martinsburg on, during the hours of our event. So county residents counted in this, but if you live, if you were a city resident, then you, you know, on a cellphone, it didn't go towards us. So not counting anybody who lives in the city. Twelve thousand five hundred people were downtown. Little, you know, I don't know the exact number, but twelve thousand five hundred folks that don't live in the city of Martinsburg were downtown between the hours of our events. And I, I think if that's the trend moving forward, you know, we didn't spend a dime on marketing that event between radio, social media, nothing. It was all organic. It was all, you know, word of mouth and all, you know, our, our pushing things out through socials without putting any money behind it. So, yeah, we're really proud of, of the turnout that we've had at these things. Just means we got to get more Porta-Johns and more, more toilet paper because at the last St. Patrick's Day event, we ran out of all that stuff. I was running around, going to the day guy, begging for toilet paper. It was, it was insane. Good problems to have. Good problems to have.
Sort of had the same problem for the Fourth of July event at the airport. I mean, it was, how's that? Go ahead. Has your statement? No, no, just, just make a comment.
The passport app, is this something new? Is this some?
So it's, it's a new concept. We were talking with the Development Authority to try to help offset some of the costs of it. And, and again, it is, it's the theory of membership. And I wish I had brought a copy of Downtown Charleston Association. They do this, but they do a physical passport. Pay the company or the organization there. And each business has a deal like BOGO or something like that. It's like the cards that you get for the athletic departments here at the high schools. You know, you get your, your discount and stuff like that. But it's focused on downtown and it's a one-time deal. So you stamp along like it's a passport in the downtown. Collect enough stamps, you know, you come to one of our events, which obviously we feel are very successful and people seem to really like them. So you get, I mean, alone, if I had everybody who came to that Food Truck Fest had a, had a, had one of those passports, ours is going to be digital. So the concept, again, we're hopefully going to use the company that did West Virginia, West Virginia waterfall trails. So you just log in, we get all the data, so then we're able to contact these people further. But each business downtown would have some kind of offering that, that they're giving us. And it's the same concept as our membership, only now you actually get something as an individual. Before, our membership as an individual is kind of just to support.
So will this be active thing at each, in every event?
It'll be.
This will be one of its own event that they?
No, no, no. So the idea of this is that it's all year round. So we want to capture the folks that come to our events and get them to come back down outside of an event. So if you come to our St. Patrick's Day event and you see the promotion, you know, I scan it and I'll log in, thirty dollars to be, you know, to download this app. It's basically a coupon book for downtown. And along the way, you're earning points, badges, and, you know, whatever tokens along the way. And then at, you know, Wine Festival, it gives a special rate if you've shopped downtown enough. So again, it's a fundraiser for us, but also our goal is that it would create a spending habit in downtown. It would create people going outside of, because everybody loves the events from a business perspective. They're talking about, you know, some people make their quarters in one, one event. But the goal would be, hey, let's come back outside of four times a year. Or outside of just Fridays at five or the Summer Concert Series. So the goal of this would be, you know, stop just coming whenever we have stuff. The goal is start coming more often. Check out, like, for example, on that, that survey that we did, one of the top things people wanted were bookstores. We have two. So one, I need to meet with the businesses and talk about, we need to work on marketing. But two, we can now let some of those folks know, here's what's happening at the bookstore this month. And it'll also give those businesses the capability of, you know, we wouldn't charge, up-charge them, but it costs like a penny per contact or something like that to send out a text to everybody who signed up for this app to say, here's this twenty-five percent off deal. You know, bricks if you get wine, get this or whatever. So the idea is, it's kind of marrying all the things that we already do well and giving somebody a value so that it's a fundraiser for us because we'll have their costs covered. And then hopefully it'll get people in the doors of these businesses outside of just our marquee events.
So you replace your membership for businesses with this? They'll pay for this instead of membership?
So yeah, so we're not going to ask the businesses.
Their business is tied into this app.
So let me, yeah. And, and the reason why I'm really hoping to get away from asking businesses for stuff, if, if a business outside of our district wants, wants to support Main Street Martinsburg, and most of the time the folks that, well, not most of the time, let me take that back. But a lot of times right now, what I feel conflicted on is I'll get folks on Edwin Miller Boulevard, on Foxcroft, that want to have an e-blast through the door. They'll want to have a Facebook post through Main Street. That's just not the mission of Main Street Martinsburg. Our goal is to promote the downtown historic history. But in our previous way of doing membership, it was similar to structure to that of the Chamber of Commerce where if you're a member, we'll do an e-blast. So for me, that was a little bit of a conflict of interest, I guess, of what we're trying to accomplish and getting people downtown. So if you're outside of our district, you want to support us and get some kind of advertising, and there's many opportunities to sponsor our events and get your logo on things at our events in various different levels that I think appreciate different, you know, situations. So that's what, the only opportunity for a business to, you know, get their brand out there is, you know, sponsor an event, sponsor a community event. But then on the flip of it, if you're downtown, all we're asking is that you offer this one-time code for people. It's not like, that's the other thing with those subway cars or whatever cars they are, like Kings or something. There's like twenty-five percent off every time you come in there if you frequently. We're only asking one time or however much the person wants to give. But yeah, so the, the goal would be stop asking the businesses for seventy-five dollars a year and let's try to grow our thirty-dollar membership level because we're giving people more. We're giving individuals more, more of a grassroots approach, I guess.
Thanks, Steve.
Good.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you all. And yeah, look forward to working with you guys on many a things. Thank you.
Looking forward to attending them.
Thank you.
Right on time, one more. Okay. Executive Director for Community Alternatives to Violence. This is you, Mary Jo. Did I say that right?
Jo.
Jo.
Yes, Jo.
Oops, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Get back to my change. Jo Elliott, okay.
Yeah. Well, first I, I need to thank you guys for the supplemental funding that you gave us. Um, that couldn't have come at a better time and definitely we're hanging down the hall when we got that letter. So that extra ten thousand was much appreciated. Thank you, Matt. Um, so I'm back asking for fifteen thousand again for our facilitation team. I'm not sure how much more I really can add. I think I put my heart into the letter that was sent to you guys. Um, facilitation team really is the heart and soul of who we are and what we do. I mean, it's, it's classes, right? The classes that we're running, um, trying to work with the perpetrators of domestic violence, helping them to make the changes that they need to make so that, uh, we're not, we're kind of helping community with the shows. Um, I don't know how many, I'm seeing faces that are here.
We do have two new faces up here.
This is not who I'm used to looking at. Um, so I guess maybe the, the new ones, I don't know if you're familiar with Cav? Your questions with Cav? Can I run through exactly ADR and what we do? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
That would be, yeah.
Sure. Okay. So-
Two new ones are Steve and H D, so.
Um, so Cav, Community Alternatives to Violence, we are battering and intervention of intervention for our, it's only one licensed by the Family Services Board here in East City Handle to do this work. So we work with those who have committed violence in their families or in their personal relationships. It doesn't have to be partner, but those are people who are part of their relationships. And we take them through a minimum of thirty-two classes where we get to explore their belief systems, figure out why they feel they have the rights to hurt people in their families, um, understand the impact of what they've done, not just, uh, not just on the person that you harmed, but for how we call your, your cleanup group, you know, everyone else who's been harmed, let's help fix this. And then help them learn ways to be accountable, uh, to themselves, to their victims, to us as a community. Um, we are, you frequently refer to anger management. Um, we are different from anger management. We do cover anger management in our program. In anger management, um, we're focusing on controlling that anger and our focus is on you, the individual in front of me in that anger management class. In a BIPs class, our focus really is on the victim. You, the perpetrator, are sitting in my class, you're the one who I'm working with, but in all times, our focus is on the victim, preventing future victims. Our focus is on the children and focus is on the individual at large. Um, so that's who you are and what you do.
Go ahead and involve the whole family, not just the adults.
So the, only the perpetrator is in our class, yes. Um, that's our, we call them the service participant, with the ultimate client being the victim, the family. Um, we understand that just because, you know, one parent harms another parent and the children may not see it, the children are still affected.
True.
And we need to make sure everyone understands the harm we're, we are doing when we hurt someone's parent. Uh, we are seeing the generational effect, the trauma and cycle violence in our program. We are now having the children, people who have been in our program before, and they tell us they remember mom or dad harming the other. Uh, so that's a cycle that we have to break, that we are trying to break.
How hard is it to break?
Very hard. Um, it is unfortunately nothing that we can force upon the individual. Um, they have to come ready, willing, and able, or at least we open the fact that we are going to push and push and push until you do. Um, it is very common that people come in and start with us just to buy in, to oppositional. They didn't feel anything wrong, they're the real victim, they have the right to be just out of the other. So we spend a whole lot of time trying to break through and get people to understand that it does not matter who has done what to you. You and you alone are responsible for your actions, reactions, your choices, and get out of that victim mode of, you know, the cops and the next man and this, what happened, this, or whatever it is.
There, there are signs there, though, by the court system that come and see you-
For the most part, um-
Or some voluntarily.
Little combination. Um, most of our folks are with us through the magistrate courts that have been in charge of domestic. Um, we do have protective orders. We have with us a, a terms of probation or parole. We do have CPS cases, um, and we do have a few, we call them non-court involved, and that's a population we would love to grow. Uh, we'd love to get our hands on you before, you know, before the courts get involved. You know, once you realize, you know, I'm seeing things I should not be seeing, and my kid's doing this, and I'm not happy, and my partner's not happy, yeah, that'd be a perfect time for us to get our hands on you. Um, a lot of what we teach, a lot of the guys, if they really get it, make that change, say, why isn't this in our schools? We should have learned this in middle school. Yeah. You know, we, we should.
Truthfully, they, they should learn it at home.
Well, they should, but they don't-
That's, that's the place it has to start.
Yeah.
And they have the bullying program in school and they're promoting that really heavily now, so I don't know why this couldn't be a part of that, I would even think.
So in fact, I heard you write the mental abuse is just as bad as the physical abuse. Is that-
I would say it is just as bad, and for many, they would say it's worse, but worse. We do talk with victims. A lot of them say, I would rather he just hit me because the bruise will heal, the, you know, the, the cut will heal. But is that the, the mental and emotional trauma, it stays with that. So, you know, you can yourself probably think back to a time before a kid, whether it was a parent or someone in the schoolyard or someone said something to you that hurt you emotionally, like you probably think about that right now and remember it. So if you're getting that at home-
It's there forever.
It's there forever.
Do you have faith-based, faith-based partner?
We do not directly address any particular faith because we have so many different faiths in our program. Um, but we do try to address it from what the, like, educational, intellectual perspective, um, understanding that for a lot of folks, they, of people in that are quoting their religious texts, this is why I think I get to do this. Um, so we do have to walk that fine line between we're not preachers, pastors, anyone, um, but we are about relationships. So we're aware of it, yeah.
How many people do you serve in a year's time? Do you help?
Um, right now, this very moment, we have a hundred and seventy-seven in our program, makes it men and women. Um, so it kind of varies. Um, I think last year we had like three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty. Uh, we had three hundred and ninety-eight in, who went through the program at some point. They may have dropped out or they may have completed. And over half of those worked in our program. So we are Jefferson, Morgan, and Berkeley, but most of them are still here.
Do you have satellite offices or strictly on market?
So we have, um, because we represent all three of the counties, we are in-person here in Martinsburg and we're in-person in Jefferson. Our Morgan folks, you attend, we do Zoom. So, um, the Morgan folks are on Zoom and there are, are people that are a little bit further away. Um, we still have folks with health issues, COVID concerns, even though, you know, some of them are just beginning to get over and some are not. Um, we're mindful of that. So our, our Morgan presence is online and that also captures the other people who, um, who can't be in person. So we have a men's class that is, we call it Synchrony, it's online, using Zoom. We have a women's class that uses Zoom. So we're able to catch all those people that just can't be in person and otherwise would, you know, not have the benefit of all the help in jails, these are kids, whatever.
How do you measure your success?
That actually is a question that so many of us do scratch our heads over. The gold standard used to be recidivism, right? How many are doing it again? Unfortunately, with domestic abuse, so much of what is abusive is actually behavior, that just because they're not getting arrested for their domestic doesn't mean they're not still being harmful at home. Um, or maybe they are now smarter, right? So they're not getting caught or maybe intimidating the person even more, so they're not going to call, um, for help. So we really can't use recidivism. I don't think it really captures it. So really what we look at is community acceptance and the coordination of community response. Um, the more referrals we get, the more organizations they're referring to us, the more, more adhering of us, that needs of us, as supporting us, lets us go. People like, hey, you're doing a good job, all right? We're seeing a positive effect. You're benefiting our community. If we weren't doing our job, people would stop sending over to us.
How long have you been in business here?
Cav was started in, um, ninety-six.
It did? That's not long ago?
Yeah. And our numbers dwindled a little bit and we've been able to maintain that high level. So, I mean, I, I think that, that says that the force, the DA to charge it, they're believing in what the court will do, they're supporting our support. Um, so why do we need money? Because we do charge a fee as part of the accountability fees, right? You got to attend, you got to pay, you got to pay, that's part of the income for yourself. So many of our folks are unemployed, underemployed students. They just really need a, a word match. Um, so we cut down the fees as much as we possibly can, allow community service options. If you're unemployed, you're a student, there's just no money coming in. Um, we let you do community service while that, there's no money coming in. That's where we get a little upset sometimes. So we just can't sustain ourselves on, on that.
Have you seen a fluctuation over the age group of, so much of this age group has increased and this has decreased?
Not really. No, it's, it's across all ages. Um, I think in the beginning of the pandemic, we saw a lot more youngerish, um, but that sort of balanced out and we're back to, we, we can't remember.
Anything, H D? Mr. B?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Sorry you have to do it, but thank you.
It's hard work.
How big a staff do you have?
And so there's myself and my office manager, the, are the salary folks, and then we have our facilitation team, which is a combination of volunteers and faith, and it's, but the faith one that I'm here for, um, along with the training. So, um, I think we've got, you know, we've got our lab and facilitator, facilitator training. It's not enough. Um, a couple of our classes really are at capacity. The ideal class size is going to be like a ten, eleven, and even twelve. It's going to push in it, um, just because that gives everybody a chance to talk and really dig in and get figures and that. And there's too many people and some will get through class without a word, and then we have to go get them the next week. And we've got some classes that are pretty big because we need more bodies.
Well, thank you so much.
So thank you.
Mr. Davis, anything to add or subtract?
We have to stay in session until four o'clock. So if you want to take a break, some of us can hang around and then come back in at four recess.
Well, I was going to ask, if I could turn the gavel over to Eddie, I have to make it to the bank before they close, I think, so.
Yeah, I don't anticipate anyone coming in, but-
You just never know. They'll take a break until four. They'll take a break until four, Eddie, I'll let you. Back in session, any ideas from the public? There are none. Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, substituting for Mr. President. I'm going to recess.
Thank you, sir. We are recessed.